Preparing to live.
There you go. Live stream.
Got it.
I'm streaming.
Now I can say, start recording. Hang on, John, it's just about there. Have somebody else joining our meeting. Now I get to. Resume recording. It's just about ready to come up. Okay. Okay, John, start the meeting.
Right, okay. Good afternoon, thank you everyone for joining us for the December Guam Board of Accountancy Board Meeting. I call the meeting to order. Present are board members Todd Smith, Francis Baba, myself, John Onodera, Executive Director Dave Sanford, so we have a quorum. Going to the first item on the business is the approval of last meetings minutes, which is October 21st. I mean, before I go there, I think I should just confirm that this meeting was properly noticed and so no issues and we should proceed with the meeting. So the first item is the approval of last meetings minutes, which was the, was it the October? October 21st meeting.
Yes.
I have read through the minutes and moved we approve.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Francis. Okay, thank you. I have no issues with the minutes either, so last meetings minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, Dave, do you want to go to old business first or?
Yeah, the whole business is Guam County Endowment Fund update. And just first off, we'll run through the Raymond James, the fund report. As you can see, we're, we're gaining, we're a little over three and a half million, we're almost 3.7 million here. The details. We're November 30th, we're at 3.6 because of course the market's fallen down a little bit where we're still looking at the investment results of 57,000. This 9500 was actually withdrawal for fees, which puts our total fees at 36,000, I think, for the year to date. So here's the year to date as of October 31st. At 47,000 in income, 36,000 in fees, so we're still about 11,000 to the good for fees and we had a fund balance of 3.697 million, so almost 3.7. And of course, it's down over the last month, the market's been down the last few days, but it'll go back up, but on a annual basis, we're, we're showing a investment performance a little over 10% so. We're hanging in there and doing a lot better than our plan 6%, so I don't, I don't see any issues with funded at this point. So being at 3.6 million. The rest of this is a detailed statement for anybody who cares to browse through it. Then what, what we wanted to do is I want to move to the approval of a contribution because last, last meeting, we discussed the contribution and so I had a conversation with our attorney and he recommended that we do a resolution to document the contribution itself and the fact that it'll be managed by the endowment fund. So what I've done is written this resolution here that basically just outlines the legal authority for making that contribution with our fund balance based on the continuing appropriation that was in the latest Budget Act for FY 2022. So basically recommending that we go ahead and approve the resolution to make another $1 million contribution to the Guam County Endowment Fund. Simply because we've got the money in the bank and the bank is, is as of November 1st going to pay us 0.01%, not, not 1%, but 0.01%. So we can, we're earning basically $10 on a million dollar bank balance. We earn a lot more in the endowment fund, so. We discussed it last meeting and the recommendation was to be sure we had the legal authority and the attorney's given me this in terms of the legal authority and agrees, yes, we do have it, so. As long as we have the funds and the fund balance, we can do it, so.
Okay. And Dave, this 1 million, this is in addition to what we already contributed this FY 22?
Well, we haven't contributed for FY 22 yet. We had the original budget that they enacted was based on the 2019 budget again, which was only 3, 300,000. But I'm recommending that we make the million dollar contribution, so.
Okay.
Place, in place of the 300,000.
Okay, okay, so this will be the full FY 22 contribution.
Right, and that'll leave us 300, 300,000 in the checking account and still 750 in the TCDs that we have. And I would, would presume the recommend, to recommend that as, as the TCDs mature, we should probably contribute them also. At least, at least two out of the three of them, because we have three TCDs, basically 250,000 each. And they're not earning near what they'll earn in the endowment fund, so.
I think this, this is, this is good. I mean, it sounds, it's smart. You know, the, the longer we leave it in checking account, you know, the less is contributed to the school, the O G, you know, for their use, so. Definitely 0.01%.
Just doesn't get it. Pretty soon they'll be, pretty soon they'll be charging us fees on the bank account balance, you know.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
I move that we accept the resolution to contribute $1 million in FY 22.
Second.
Okay, all right, approved, thank you.
So we'll get that done and try to get the check out before the end of this month, so it'll be in and we'll probably, they'll probably want to have picture taking to document the facts, so.
Okay.
And basically, we just need to move on to the licensing. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to review the 124 new licensees. The only one from Guam is number 84. So, and I think she works for you, John, at EY. Everybody else I've gone through and surprisingly, the majority of the people we have up for licensing are with the firms, Pricewaterhouse, KPMG, EY. Oh, yeah. You know, you name it, but, but most of them are with the, the bigger CPA firms and most either through the Middle East or the Far East, so. But we, we, we welcome new licensees, so.
Absolutely. These, these were, there, there was no there was no questions on any of these. I mean, they're all, they were all approved, any, any.
Right, we've. No, no, no problems. We, we vetted all of them, so. They all have, you know, actively licensed CPAs signing off on their experience, etc., so. And they'll have the experience. There are a number of initial certificate with inactive licenses issued, starting at about 80 1 or 82, something like that, 88, let me see. Here. Number 84, which it says 87, but is actually 84, that's Miss Jurisia Sanchez Camacho. Jurisia Camacho, she's the one that's working for EY today. Yeah, so, yeah, she's, so we started at number number 80, 81 actually is the, the one that starts the inactive certificates, initial certificate within active with no experience, so. So that's about 33 33 new licensees that have passed the exam and are working on their experience now, so.
Hey Dave, was there anyone that verified Jurisia's work experience?
Well, she's, she's applying for the initial certificate, inactive, so.
Okay.
Yeah, so these are the people that have passed the exam and satisfied the education requirements, they just need to fulfill their experience, so.
Okay.
So. Okay, so that puts us basically down to the last one is 124, so. So we have 124 total new licensees, so we just needed approval.
Okay, can I hear a motion to approve the certifications, initial certifications and licenses to practice?
Move to approve initial certification licenses.
Sure.
Thank it. Okay, thank you, approved.
Thank you, that's done, so we got that. I would go back just for briefly to the old business on new licensee reimbursement policy. We did discuss that at the last meeting and the board recommended that we restricted to new active licensees, which we, which we all agreed to, but our attorney had mentioned something about doing it through the rulemaking process, so I went back and, and had a conversation with him about doing it as a, as a policy versus doing it through rulemaking. And his recommendation is that if we do it as a policy, we do it on a, on a test basis to determine whether it's effective or not. And with a limited period and then we can decide if we're going to go forward, he said you're, our, our best option would be to to make it into a rule. So that when we reimburse people, then it's, it's under the rule that gives us the authority to, to, to pay out people, so. So I'm, I need to draft it in terms of a policy that, that is couched in terms of maybe we do a six month or a one year test period and see how it works. That, that's kind of what, what I need to do, so I need to redraft it to that point and then I want to do it in such a way that if we decide that's what we want to continue with, then it'd be easy to make it into a rule, so. So that's where we're at, but.
Sorry, budget for this? I'm just curious.
Well, we've always had a, we've always had a budget of about 15,000 a year for, for educational purposes. You know, for incentive educational purposes, so.
How? If we, we, if we have this policy, how, how do we get the word out? How, how do people know about it?
Well, we'd, we'd send it out with our email. I'm putting together, we're on the verge of doing a semi-annual newsletter and then we also have a email and then NASBA will do all the emails for us, we just need to build our, our database. And they would also be able to email to all of our candidates, so.
Yeah, that, yeah, yeah, okay.
And we'd also disseminate it through the Guam Society of CPAs and the University of Guam, so.
Okay.
Locally, so, because it will only apply to the local candidates, so.
And yeah, and I think a lot of the firms will be aware of it too, and hopefully they'll be encouraging and promoting it to their, their staff.
Yeah, we're, we're hoping that a lot of the firms will want to contribute to the endowment fund pretty soon. To go with it, so. The next item we have is an NTS extension request. This is a person that had some kind of neck injury and she's been having counseling issues, psychological problems and she's been doing online counseling and things and she was recommended to, to take some rest and they gave her medication, I guess, which means she's not concentrating very well, so. She's asking to extend her notice to schedule from December the 2nd today to the end of December, so. I didn't see any issue with that. I think we should go ahead and do it, so. I just want the, the board to be aware that, that that's a we've extended most of the other notices to the end of December because of the COVID lockdowns and travel issues, etc. And believe she's in India, but so she can test, so I guess she, she's planning to test by the end of December, so. But there's, there's a whole record of her scheduling and her treatment, the doctor's note, the counseling treatment, the counseling sessions, so. I don't see any issues with it at this point. Okay.
Along, is she asking or what's the date, sorry?
Just from December 2nd to December 30th, so just to the end of this month, so. It's basically asking for four weeks, so.
Four weeks, okay. I'm, I'm okay, but I don't see issues.
I'm okay.
Okay. So.
Problems.
Okay, so then the next item we have is the candidate care report, which as usual has pretty much the same issues. Flip down here where the one thing I noticed is, you know, the candidate error always seems to be the same. They, they don't bring their stuff to the test center, they get the wrong one or they issues with ID and, and stuff like that. The technical software hardware thing, they still have these issues, not as many as before, but then one of the items this quarter was AICPA discovered an issue with exhibits that opened as blanks. And then they had an issue with the literature not, not being accessible during the test events, so. They put in a new driver to fix it, so presumably it's fixed, but they offered all affected candidates free retest. It's hard to tell exactly how many they had, but when you look at the technical software hardware problem, they had, they had 35 of them total, so. It's probably out of the 20 are the ones that had that problem, so can't be too bad. Considering that, you know, there's several thousand tests that was. I'm not sure how many tests they had in the quarter, it's increasing all the time, so. So that's basically the, the only issue that the candidate care reported in terms of the exam testing. Okay, so then we can move on to the annual meeting recap, which I wrote up based on, I found, I attended the NASBA annual meeting, which was like from 1 a.m. to 7 a.m. two days in a row.
Thank you, Dave.
So. I voted for the bylaw change, which was just basically, that's the only thing there was to vote for and it's all procedural anyway, so. But one of the things they brought up was in the CPA evolution, they're, they're moving and I'm on the CBT admin committee, which is also recommending this, but they're hoping that with the new version of the exam in 2024, they can, we can better standardize the notice to schedule length, because right now, most are six months, but some are three months like Texas. And there are others that are 12 months, so they want to standardize that and we also want to standardize using the score release date as the start date for the 18 month period to pass all parts, you know, the, the rolling 18 month period. The reason for that is because right now, some people like us, we do it as of the end of the month, you first sit for your first section. Other people do it at the beginning of the month, other people do it from the day you sat and then others still do it from the day this, you get the score. So the CBT admin committee discussed it and basically they're saying that our, our position is if you do it as of the score release date, then we know exactly what that date is for every window, for every score that's released and that date gets recorded in the gateway already. And then it's easy to, to go from that date. And then when you have delays in releasing the score, like when they have new sections of the exam and they have to delay the scoring in order to, to make sure it's, it's valid. You don't have to go and make a lot of changes to your rule or exceptions to your policy because it, it changes the date. It changes their 18 month window. When the score is released is delayed, then the 18 month window won't start until it's actually released, so. That's kind of the thinking behind that, so. Another thing they discussed was that President Biden issued an executive order that promotes competition quote unquote and has a FTC, he wants the FTC to ban unnecessary occupational licensing. And that's what's giving fire to a lot of these organizations that are, are pushing to do away with licensing altogether. So ARPO is pushing back and they're, they're working on, on, you know, refuting that those kind of things, so. That's, that's where they're going with that, so. They're making progress, but I, I don't think CPA licensing is going away, so.
No, but Dave, sorry, for Guam, that would require legislative changes, right?
Yes, correct, and I don't, I, you know, there are various organizations throughout the states, different states that are pushing it in, in some capacity, but I haven't heard anybody in Guam that, that's interested in doing away with licensing, so. Yeah, so I don't think it's an issue here, at least not at this point, so. The biggest thing they covered was on the candidate pipeline, they're talking about the the decline and the, the stats they gave and some of it comes out of this decoding the decline report, but from 2017 to 21, they're saying 70,000 candidates decreased and that's about 175,000 sections. International has increased a little bit, but only mostly due to the opening, the testing in India. But the fall 2021 community college enrollments on a nationwide basis were down about 10%. And on that same nationwide basis, they, they found that four-year institutions were down over 1 million students total. So if you look at the fact that accounting was probably about seven or eight percent of those, you're talking about a lot of people that just aren't going to school anymore. So that, that's one of the bigger issues. The report that's included in the materials decoding the decline goes into more detail, it was done by the Illinois Society of CPAs and it has a lot of statistics on the survey, how they did it, what they discovered, but one of the, the, the biggest surprises, I guess, was that people have always said, well, the exam's too expensive and, you know. But they found out that even with the education, oh, you got too much education and what, what they found out in their surveying of people who have actually dropped out of the process of becoming a CPA and trying to pass the exam is that cost and educational hours are not deciding factors. The real deciding factors are the time commitment to pass the exam and a lack of perceived value because employers don't require it. Or they find other credentials more relevant and, and the, the more relevant other credentials is relative to CPA firms hiring people in the IT section and, and statistics and math, that kind of thing. Because of the technology changes, so. So those seem to be the real deciding factors in you know, why people drop out of the process and why the pipeline's declining, so now they're, they're focused between AICPA and NASBA, because this came up in the AICPA council meetings also. They're focusing on what they can do to, to improve in these areas to, to make it more attractive to bring people into the, the accounting career in CPA. Ultimately. And EY presented something during the meeting called its Career Path Accelerator. And what they've done is because they hire interns and then they hire, you know, their first year graduates who are working on completing their education to qualify for licensure. And some of them may or may not have already passed the exam, but they need the extra education to pass, because a lot of them sit with 120 hours and then they need the 30 hours, so. EY on a, on a nationwide basis in the States has, has done a deal with HALT International School of Business. And they're subsidizing the cost per credit hour so that the interns and their first year hires can actually attend courses through HALT International School of Business on a, on a online remote basis. And it is a ACSB accredited, so there's no issues with accreditation. And get the, get those extra hours at, at a more reasonable cost and, and it's also supported by the firm, so. So I guess that's, that's one of the ways that the firms are trying to approach it, because of course they need CPAs, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if you've heard about that program, John, on, you guys are on the international side or not, but.
Yeah, see, I did. Was presented to us here in Guam and I, I, one question I still need to answer is if, you know, if Guam participate, the only problem is that it's the time, time zone difference.
You have to still be up at 1 a.m. Yeah, yeah, okay. Anyway, that, and that's, that's the majority of it, the, the regional breakout session I was in, they had a big discussion in, in Washington from Washington State people about can the Board of Accountancy have jurisdiction over a CPA that works in the government agency, like they, they had somebody working in their state auditor's office who's a licensed CPA, but there were complaints against the CPA about the work he did. And did it follow the standards and they wanted to do something about it and their Attorney General told him you can't do anything about it because he's working for a government agency, so he's not under your jurisdiction. He's not practicing public accounting per se, so. There was, you know, a lot of discussion about, you know, can we do anything and I think from our standpoint, we don't have any restrictions about that, but apparently Washington State law has some some rule or law against how you take action against the licensee performing regulated services for another government agency, so. They were just totally surprised by the whole process, that they couldn't do anything about the guy doing substandard work. So. Anyway, I just.
Washington.
Bring that up. Yeah, that's Washington for you.
Yeah, it is, really. The, the bureaucracy at all levels of government in that state are, are just overwhelming.
Oh, yeah. I'm not sure, I'm not sure if California is worse or not.
Yeah.
But they're pretty close to the same, I know that for a fact, so. Okay, so this is the inside, the decoding, the decline pipeline report, which I'm, I'm not going to go through, I, I put it in the materials just so everybody could, could have it read if you want to, but it, it has a lot of good information and especially about the people they surveyed and and the write-up of some of the challenges and stuff is, is pretty good also. So, so I can make this a little smaller, so it'll, it'll fit better. It's pretty big. So there's a bunch of pages of that and then we went to the the NASBA annual report, which I also included. And there's not a lot going here, I mean, you can read through it, there's a lot of good information in it, but it's all the standard information about NASBA, who's, who's on what committee and those kind of things and then they have some additional information in the back concerning the you know, financial statements and, you know, all of their committees and things like that, so. It is good information, but it's probably better bedtime reading than it is for us to wade through it. Nothing you'd find any surprises about, so. Okay, so for our October financial. We're looking pretty good, actually, we, we have our, our exam fees are, are picking up, so that's the ones processed through CPAS, so. Basically, we had 452 applicants between first time and reexam and 600 and some odd sections, so. That's the fees of the 12, six, so we're, we're pretty well on target to exceed our, our budget, I think, for our exam application fees. Our exam application fees, the test center fees, we budgeted at zero and we're getting dribbles. So, you know, five hundred here, a thousand last month or two months ago, but. Little by little, certification fees are, are good. As you could see, we had a hundred and twenty four licensees. For this meeting, which covers two months, so we're, we're well on target for that. Um, the individual licensing fees is the renewals, and of course, that'll, that'll peak between March and June. And the firm licensing fees always comes in May and June. And then the penalties and interest we never budget, but for the thirty seven nine in revenue. We did pretty good. Our expense budget is still the seven eighty nine, seven eighty from two thousand nineteen. If you take out the three hundred U O G endowment contribution, it's four eighty nine, essentially four ninety in expenses. And based on our expenses with the thirty three thousand for the month. Um, if you extrapolate that over to twelve months, we're, we're well within our four hundred and ninety thousand expense budget. So we should wind up with a little bit of excess. Um, because if, if you look at the budgeted revenues and. And offset the three hundred thousand contribution, we would still have a twelve thousand dollar excess revenue at the end of the year. Uh, which is a pretty good milestone, considering our test center fees were, were budgeted at zero. So anything we get from them will be excess. So on the whole, we're looking fine, which gives us our ending fund balance of two million forty eight. We've got a million three, three hundred and four thousand in, in the bank. That's the Bank of Guam checking account. Seven fifty eight in the T C D, so. Um, I think we've, we've got enough to make the million dollar contribution, and we still have three hundred in the checking account. Which would leave us fine for operating expenses. And then the T C Ds, uh, summer, one is six months, one is twelve months, and one is two years, so. Uh, as they mature, I think we should contribute those also. And then if we still run a balance of two to three hundred thousand in the checking account, which is, should be plenty for operations on a continuing basis. Okay, and here's the, the actual results for the, it looks a little funny because it's only one month. So it's, it's on a year to date basis, so every month that we add. But for the month of October, our, our fiscal FY twenty two revenues are, are. Exceeding FY twenty one. And you can see how we've had our, our. Here are total sections for six hundred and sixty three for FY twenty two versus four seventy nine for FY twenty one. So we had a hundred and forty more applicants, so. Um, we're making progress, and I, I think it's just going to get better as things. Well, presuming that the COVID, you know. Coping with COVID gets better, then more people can travel. The Chinese can now come to Guam to test. Uh, the only issue is going back to China, they have, they have a two, two week quarantine, so. But otherwise, uh, we're okay in that sense, so. That's basically all I have at this point, unless anybody has any questions or anything, so.
No questions. No, I don't have anything else.
Okay. Okay, Francis, you have any questions? Okay, I know, I know, John, you need, need to head out soon, so.
Yes, okay, so that was the second to adjourn by Francis, and so I guess, meeting adjourned.
Okay, then we're good to go and we'll schedule a meeting. Next meeting will be in January, so.
January, so no, me, also, today's meeting was December, okay.
I assume that everybody got that email from. From, uh, what's her name, the lawyer?
Right, Happy, Happy Ranch, yeah. Yeah, I'm going to put that on the agenda for the January meeting, so we'll cover it there.
We're all covered there.
Yeah, all covered. Okay, that's good. Like I said, a, a big learning experience, expensive, but it's.
That it was. Okay.
Now we understand. Okay.
Yeah, well, thank you and, uh, have a good, uh, have a good Christmas and New Year's. Well, I'm sure we'll talk again before January, but.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thanks, everyone.